...of the United States of America, and see the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe all of us know Jeff. Jeff, as you know, is where we're going. We blew up around Morde Creek, followed Wismil Wright, moved around from Roseburg to Monoc County. But one thing I'd like to emphasize is what he emphasizes. Good work in families, education for our kids.
Thank you so much.
Matters of raising our families and our children. Jeff has been very strong on that point in Congress. Also, a little background. How many of you remember Senator Mark Hatfield? I understand Jeff Merkley was an intern.
Oh, wow, that's cool.
I don't know the years, but then he made...
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. Then came, got transferred into politics, and then came Oregon House Representative in 2000, I mean, nineteen ninety-eight. And eventually, a U.S. Senator in 2009. So it's my pleasure to have him be Senator Jeff Merkley.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner. And do we have any other elected officials that want to introduce themselves? Going once, going twice?
I'll raise myself, I'm Commissioner Kent Hefner.
We're so pleased to have folks step forward and make public service because you think you know the set of issues, and there's always new and difficult things to deal with. And it's no easier on the county level than it is on the city level, no even on federal level. It's always challenging. If things were easy, then somebody else already solved them, and you're left with the tough challenges. And I want to thank the Elks Watch for having us, and any representatives of the Elks that are here, thank you so much for hosting us. Appreciate it a great deal. And in fact, we'd like, and is it great? Go on up then, all right. So each town hall, I try to shine a light on something positive that's happening in the community. And today, wanted to shine that spotlight on the Lakeview Elks. And they do a whole variety of things, but among those is sponsoring a golf tournament to help fund the eye clinic downtown, and the Elks Children's Eye Clinic by Forest S.U. And why don't you tell us a little bit about that, if you would?
Okay, well, thank you, Senator, for being here. Appreciate your staff. I'm Greg Campbell, I'm an exalted ruler here at the Elks, and basically, the Elks does do a lot for the community. And we'd like to welcome every member here today to see the Senator. But, you know, we take care of the veterans around here, and we do a lot of work with the youth and the children's clinics, eye clinic in Portland, like the Senator said. And we also take care of the elderly, we send food out to them and run them around town. So there's a lot of activities that go on here in Elks, way too many for me to take up his precious time. If you'd like to become, can I sell this picture here? Would you like to become an Elks member? We would always open our arms to anybody who'd like to become an Elk, and we appreciate it. Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it.
So in recognition of the good work, this is just a symbolic way of saying thank you. It's a flag that has been forward in the U.S. Capitol. I'll disagree all the use in any way.
We'll share the box. Thank you, sir. We do appreciate it.
We'll give you the backup as well.
Oh, okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate it. So last year, when I was here, we gave a flag to the Lake County Partnership, and the partnership said, "Say, Senator, we're doing a lot to do projects downtown, but we really are having a problem with the post office." And so getting the U.S. Postal Service to clean it up. So I talked to Greg Wall, and I talked to Senator Wyden, and we did a joint letter, and they responded, and they cleaned it up since I was here last time. So yay, a little bit of action from the U.S. Postal Service. I'm going to share just a few things that are going on in D.C., you're hearing pieces of it. One is the whole set of ongoing effort to understand how Russia intervened in our election. And that, we now know a lot about what they did. They set up Russian Times was doing fake stories. They set up a trolling site where they had a thousand people weighing in on the Americans. They saw those comments that looked like they were Americans, a lot of them were Russians. They set up botnets, the computers that essentially respond to social media, so one person posts and another person posts, but in this case, it was computers scattered around the world that had been programmed remotely to weigh in. And the goal was to amplify the comments enough that the, whatever they were promoting, would get onto social media, would trend on Facebook and so forth. And they broke into a bunch of computers, and they distributed a bunch of information. All of this designed to influence election. We have to work with all of our partners around the world, the other democratic republics, to understand these things and try to make sure it never happens again, because elections are an absolute foundation of our system. And Russians want to tear that down. They want to drive cynicism, they want to make our system illegitimate, and we can't let it happen. So that's one piece of the puzzle. Another is the President's budget. The President put forward a budget that will be the basis for holding conversations about the spending bills or appropriation bills. I'll be in the middle of that, because I'm on the Appropriations Committee. When I was an intern for Hatfield, it quickly became clear to me that his role on the Appropriations Committee was really important to Oregon. And since he retired, we didn't have a House or Senate member on appropriations. And so when I ran for the U.S. Senate, it was a very unlikely race. And so I struck a deal, if, you know, if something unusual happens and I actually get elected, will I get a promise to be with the first group of my class put onto appropriations? And they said yes, and so I got onto appropriations, and I've been able to weigh in on, there's no earmarking, but there are programs that are important to Oregon. And so those programs are things I can fight for and line up colleagues across the aisle who have similar, you know, it might be someone from Montana on forest issues, we're going to fight for that forest program, might be somebody from Idaho, so on and so forth. And so that's, that spending process starts with a lot of people shaking their head, because the President's budget has a lot of programs that serve rural America that have been cut. Ag is cut by twenty-five percent. And then you have the support for rural airports, the contract car support, that's cut. The community development block grounds are cut. The rural development program is cut. The rural business services is actually eliminated. And so it's quite a set of things. I think there's going to be bipartisan support, not to do most of that, but we've got to make sure that we pay attention and make sure we don't leave rural America behind. The overall budget was designed to basically put a lot more money into the military, but by doing so, by draining a lot of the programs that serve rural America. So that's, in my mind, is unacceptable. I have a feeling you all would find it unacceptable as well, and we're not going to let it happen. So that's the second thing. The third is the health care. Anybody concerned about the health care in the conversation? Quite a few. Well, so we had all that flurry over the House bill, and it eventually passed by a few votes, was sent over to the Senate, kind of disappeared for a while. In fact, it's had no committee hearing, but there's been a group of thirteen senators who have been meeting, I guess I'd say meetings secretly, because they're not talking about what they're doing. And the plan that Mitch McConnell has put forward is that a week from next Thursday, so we're now talking about just a week and a half, they're going to bring up the House bill on the floor under reconciliation, and then bring forward this plan that they've been developing secretly as an amendment to it, with no chance for committee discussion, committee amendments, and no chance for me to consult with folks back home, no chance for health care experts to weigh in and say what works and what doesn't. My wife's a nurse, I know the nurses would like to look at it, and I know the doctors would like to look at it, and the health care companies would like to look at it, the hospital administrators, so on and so forth. And so I'm doing all I can to stop that from happening, because this is a bill that, if it follows the profile that we've heard about, it will wipe out health insurance for four-hundred-thousand Oregonians. Now, do it over a period of about seven years. Put a bill like that on the floor with no chance for anybody to weigh in, that's not democracy, that's not legislative process, that's like something you'd expect out of some other system of government, not a we the people system of government. So we're going to start this next week to really try to amp up the attention to it, and hopefully get America paying attention, because right now, it's summertime, right now, Russia's in the headlines, and this could have a huge, huge impact. So, and it doesn't just affect folks, for example, on Oregon Health Plan, because the income that has come from reducing the amount of, the number of uninsured people, has made the hospitals stronger and the clinics stronger, and that affects everybody. So that's another area of conversation. So I'm just going to stop there. I think we may have one, do we have a student question, Amy?
Kara, is Kara here? Yes.
Great, okay, let me see here. Kara Albertson. Welcome. And you're going to be a junior next year?
Yes.
And interested in agriculture and biology, and enjoys skiing, and are you ski racing?
Yeah.
Very cool. Your knees are okay? I'm glad it's you and not my daughter, because it scares me when it's speed and you go down the mountain. Anyway, feel free to share your comment or your question.
Do you want to just sit?
You mean, let's come up here, and everybody can hear you. We'll put you on the squad.
I'm Kara, and I go to LHS, I'm a junior, and it's a growing concern in my class and at my school about budget cuts for extracurricular classes, and I was wondering where the money that we don't have, where's it going?
Ah, yeah, okay, that's a great question. So, where's our state legislator here? This is, School Funding North, we have two hundred school listeners. And it wasn't a few decades ago, it was basically funded by property taxes locally. And then we had a property tax initiative at the state level that said we're putting a cap on property taxes, so the schools didn't have enough money, so the state started providing funds, the state school fund. And this year, the state school fund has a big hole in it, and this is where I'd like to turn to the state legislator, if they have more information. But I understand the entire budget hole is about one-point-four billion dollars to one-point-six billion dollars, and a good share of that is related to the health plan, but they're working out a deal to solve that. And then the balance of it, and I don't know if it's fifty percent of it, but the balance of it is the school shortfall. Now, the legislature, I did hear the state legislature passed a bill that funds the schools, but they don't yet have the revenue to actually implement that unless they figure out some deal. So that's about as much as I can tell you. On the federal level, we do have a federal, Every Student Succeeds, bill, and it provides grants to low-income schools, it provides grants for a whole bunch of aspects that help out schools. I think we're going to be able to get level funding for that, so I don't think that's going to go down. I think the big hole's at the state level.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think back, when I was in high school, and I was going to stand up in front of the crowd, ask, I'd be terrified, so, good job, good job. So I think with that, the Commissioner's going to poll numbers?
Yeah, I only have about fifteen here.
And if you just want to call on people to raise your hand, it's fine with me. Is that easier?
Maybe, maybe this can have some. Well, I'm going to back up a little bit, to ensure that each one of these gets a chance to speak.
Okay, all right.
And do you like to read them off?
Let's see.
I have my glasses.
And you'll give up forty of them, so set them on.
Now, I am a young chicken, but I do need my glasses.
And if you are called, your number's called, if you could share your number, so you can retire it?
Yeah.
And I think just reading the last three digits of it?
Last three digits. I'll go with the first one. Three fifty-four. Can you raise your hand?
Yeah.
Orlando, you'll go first. Next one is three fifty-seven.
Okay.
It goes second. And the next one, three fifty-five. There. Orlando.
Yeah, I was working, it's a program on TV, but what's the status of the vote on the sale of arms to Saudi Arabia?
Okay, so there was a, the President went over, and he laid out a very big arms sales package. Most of it was stuff that had been lined up before, but there was some stuff added in. But one piece of it was about precision-guided bombs. And so there was an amendment that we voted on this week to ban those precision-guided bombs. And the reason why is Saudi Arabia has been bombing Yemen. And the previous effort, they wanted precision-guided bombs, and we thought, I thought, that that would mean they'd bomb civilian areas less. But it turned out that they were actually targeting civilian areas. And so this is the, so this was an effort to say to Saudi Arabia, "Not okay. And we don't want to have our American weapons associated with your bombing of civilians." And so that was the amendment. I voted for the amendment this year, I voted against it last year, because I actually thought the precision-guided would help save the civilian areas. And so I think the total vote went from somewhere in the teens up to about forty-seven, forty-eight, but it still didn't, the prohibition didn't pass, but I think it did send a message to Saudi Arabia that what they're doing is unacceptable, when nearly half the Senate voted to ban that piece of the sale.
Why did they, it's crazy, why did the other, why did the other folks not vote for it? I mean, you know, why can't they see?
So this is, this is really kind of interesting in foreign affairs, because sometimes you kind of look at a situation and you go, huh, the U.S. could have chosen one side or the other side. And what I'll explain is this, you have, in the Middle East, you have a crescent of conflict. And on one end is Saudi Arabia, and it's kind of the biggest, leading Sunni Muslim nation. And on the other end of the crescent is Iran, and it is the biggest, strongest Shiite Muslim nation. And those two sects of Muslims, Islam, have been fighting each other for hundreds of years. Only now, they're fighting each other with more money because of oil, they both have oil, and with more technology, because there's so much technology to buy. And so that's been rough. Meanwhile, both nations have been involved in actions that we consider destabilizing the world. Iran had the nuclear program that we got them to set aside in exchange for lifting the international sanctions, but they also are developing ballistic missiles, they're also funding the Houthis in Yemen and helping fuel that conflict. They're engaged in a number of other places that create trouble. And so Iran's been the designated bad guy. Saudi Arabia, however, has been funding madrassas around the world that have been teaching people how to be terrorists. So we treat Saudi Arabia as our friend, but I'll tell you, they're doing as much in the world to cause troubles as is Iran. So, but we've chosen to say, well, Saudi Arabia, we want your oil, we want you to buy our weapons, so we'll treat you kind of carefully while we are more aggressive in terms of our relationship with Iran. So that relationship with Saudi Arabia, because of the fuel that is buying oil, and because they're buying our armaments, bazillions of dollars, I mean, I think that was a, nearly a two-hundred-billion-dollar sale lined up, over a hundred, I know that. So that's a big deal to a lot of economies around the country, and so a lot of folks said, let's keep that relationship intact and not criticize them for Westman Island, Yemen. So that's the basic, that's the basic story. I wasn't over a lot of details, but that's the basic story. Thank you.
Yeah, on the issue of the secret planning committee for the health care business?
Yeah.
What can we do as citizens? I mean, many of us in this room have been diligently contacting our senators and congressmen. I'm just not sure how much good it does.
Well, I'll tell you, it does a lot of good. The phones are very quiet right now, because it is summertime, and because Russia is in the headlines, and because everybody mobilized back when the bill was on the House side. And it needs to become very, it needs to be elevated to a top concern over the next two weeks. But if you have a Facebook page, or you have emails that connect to family and friends in other states, or if you have a hobby association or a professional association, use all of those things to get other people activated, because in many, many other states, the people need to hear, and the most likely thing to cause somebody to pay attention and act is a friend or family member asking. That'd be my suggestion.
Yes. Senator Merkley, I want to say thank you for coming behind this H. Fresh curtain to listen to these fine folks' concerns. And you, as well as a police officer standing here, are now in a profession that is highly volatile and dangerous. I'm talking about the, were you in Washington, D.C. when the shooter?
Yes.
Oh, and you're, and you're fine, did anyone lose their life?
So the congressman is still in critical condition.
And what's his name, who was in critical?
Lewis.
Okay. From what state?
Louisiana.
Louisiana?
Thank you for filling in those details. It is, so what happened is the bullet hit his hip, and, but in such a fashion that it ricocheted inside his body, and it tore up a lot of stuff. So he's had three operations, and there'll probably be another series of operations. And we're still trying to kind of attend to all the places that the damage was on the different organs.
What is his age? Is he young, is he without family?
You know, adult, yeah, thank you, sixty-six years old.
As you know him?
I do not, I do not. I don't know many House members, and Senate and House side, or, feels like miles sometimes. But some senators were there, and a good friend of mine, Senator Blake, he was in one of the dugouts hiding, the two dugouts were like this, and this guy was behind this dugout, and these folks were in the other dugout, crouched down, and they were absolutely terrified, because they didn't know if he was going to walk across the grounds and, you know, sit there with the dugout in front of them and shoot them all down, or what safe people were the police officers. And let me just pause and say, for the Capitol Police Officers, and all of our police officers in blue are risking their lives to keep us safe every day. Thank you very much.
Just to add a question, are they, I know the talk was that you guys will have to have a security, just like the President, and of course, that's taxpayers' money. What's the, what's the, what's your feeling, or what's going to happen, do you know?
I'm going to be absolutely opposed to it, at least for me. I mean, I feel this is, I don't think you can do your job as a House or Senate member if you're not readily available to people. It's just, the hazard goes with the job. And you can't walk into meetings wearing bulletproof vests, right? As a representative of the people. And so we rely on our public safety officers, and it's not often something happens. In other words, there's four-hundred-and-thirty-five House members, there's a hundred senators, we go years without any of them being hurt. I think it'd be a huge mistake to wrap us in a blanket of security. That's just my personal feeling about it. I do understand, you know, I, listen, in 2009, 2010, when we had the first health care debate, people were super angry, as I did my thirty-six county town tour. We had one town hall that we would normally expect about thirty people, but we got a rumor it would take two-hundred, and about five hundred show up. We had hundreds of people chanting, screaming, and yelling, pounding on the wall outside. And we'd been told it was also going to be a gun demonstration, people going to bring all their firearms in it. I didn't actually see any firearms, and maybe somebody felt another. We've got really angry people, we've been puniting as the one person who is slightly over the edge. We just have to make, we have this great opportunity in our country to weigh in in so many ways, in terms of you can talk to your friends, you can criticize your government, you can write the op-ed, you get your vote, you can run for office. We just have to make it culturally a thousand percent clear, violence never acceptable in any way, and just keep reinforcing that. And we're just privileged to live in a democratic republic, but the violence reduces those chances for interaction. And I was struck by this, like, in Portland had those demonstrations where there was a small group that would come, and at the end of the demonstration late at night, they'd start throwing bricks through windows. People didn't want to go and even give their voice in a demonstration, because they were afraid it would turn to violence, because it's a very small group of people. Same thing, totally unacceptable. They called themselves anarchists, and were covering their faces. It just destroys our ability to have this sort of public square dialogue we need to have.
So what's your feeling about concealed gun care? For you guys?
For us?
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I'm not sure it makes anything safer. People have very strong opinions about this. I know that when I was down at Uploch Community College, I was talking with a fellow that had a concealed weapon at the time that the attacker came, and he pulled it out, and he started running across the grounds, and he goes, "Oh, my God, I'm going to get shot, because I'm the attacker." And he said, "I'm just going to cause more problems." And he stopped, he put it away, and he left, and left it to the police to carry on. So I don't know that there's a magic operation to it, one way or the other.
So you're not going to tell us what you would do? Would you get there?
I don't, I don't, well, I don't carry guns, so.
So you probably wouldn't? That's what you're saying?
I wouldn't, no, no, no.
Thank you.
We've got another three, three fifty-three, can you raise your hand? And three fifty-nine? And three sixty-one? Here, go first.
I'm Intich Smith, I live in the Summer Lake area, or have been for about eight years. And I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to say, we really appreciate all of the efforts that you do for us, Dr. Morrison, particularly recently, where it cannot be easy or much fun. And I don't write to you that often, because I think basically you're doing all the right stuff, particularly around major concerns, I think, for a lot of residents in Lake County around health care. I've written more to Walden, actually, in the last year about health care, because he was kind of the one who was pushing it. So we do, I do feel kind of helpless around that, other than your suggestion about, you know, contacting other people. This generally, as citizens, our main, you know, main people we can contact is actually our elected representatives. I don't think we get much traction if we're writing to somebody else or calling to somebody else. So I just wanted to say, we appreciate your efforts, and you probably, maybe, don't get to hear that enough, but so I just wanted to reinforce that.
Well, we hear it occasionally. One big challenge we have is that our news media is so split, and we just see it now more than ever, because depending on which set of channels you listen to, you get a whole different view of the world. And so I've been deliberately flipping through news channels to try to hear both sides of what's being said. Like, last week, I felt like I was in different countries to listen to two news channels. On one channel, I was listening to, "We have to stop the Russian-style attacks on the integrity of our elections, and if anybody coordinated with them, they need to be held accountable." Big American principle, nobody's above the law. And then on another channel, it had across the bottom of the screen, it said, "Coup against the President." I'm like, coup against the President? My God, what's going on? We've got to check this out. And so I turned up the sound, and it said, "Well, these folks who are giving President Trump a hard time, they're conducting an unconstitutional, unpatriotic coup against the President." Now, those two stories were just totally, like, they're not overlapping, they're two different worlds. And so the, we need more town halls, and more conversation, so that we get a more integrated understanding of what's going on, but as things become more divisive, fewer people actually hold these conversations, and so it makes it even worse. And so that's, there's no fix, there's no easy fix to this challenge. I think it is useful for us to... Uh, I think it is useful for us to listen in to both sides of that conversation, just to be, to be aware that there's diverse perspectives.
The next person happened to be the point person for the post office.
Oh, yes. I did come up to you last, last time you were here and asked you to please think about the post office and then Amy and I talked. Anyway, thank you. I think everybody in town is just really happy with it.
Oh, you're so welcome. Well, thank you for raising it. And that's one advantage of my, my travels, is people raise issues that we can, we can work on. And let me introduce Amy. Why don't you stand up, Amy? Amy Amroth, my field representative, who follows up to try to make all the, the action happen. I'm not impressed with the change, so thank you.
I have a question. I'm concerned about the education secretary and he has three daughters who are teachers and they're very concerned about the revenue going to the charter schools. And what's that going to do to the private schools? And is my tax money going to the charter schools? Do you want to?
Yeah. No, I share your concern. The, uh, so Betsy DeVos, she had a controversial hearing because she didn't really know much about public schools. I think she lives in a private bubble of very extraordinarily wealthy people who live only in the private school world. And therefore, to my mind, was totally inappropriate person to be our Secretary of Public Education. And from her viewpoint, she, what she sees is she sees that, wouldn't it be nice if the children of, that she knows, who are going to these expensive private schools, could get funding to go to those expensive private schools from the federal government? Kind of like, you're a billionaire. You know, don't pull money out of the public school for your private, I, no, this is an area of where, my, my dad, a mechanic, uh, and the formal title out of mills for the mechanic that keeps everything going, he's a mill right, so he's a mill right. And then when the mill shut down, he worked as a mechanic in all kinds of other ways. So kind of ordinary glue collar worker loved what he was doing and, and he said, "Son, if you go through the doors of that schoolhouse and you work hard, you can do just about anything here in America." And the point was, in America. It's not true elsewhere. In America, you get to do that. Aren't you lucky, son, to be born here in America? And I just thought that was so cool. I thought, wow, you know, that's like, warmed my patriotic heart. But if the public schools don't have the funding to have modest class sizes, uh, and if they don't have extra activities that help students stay interested in school or help them develop other talents, whether it's, um, maybe it's public speaking, maybe it's a chess club, maybe, it varies in the size of the school and the place, maybe it's the Ag Club, Future Farmers of America, uh, the, well, then, that isn't true any longer. Instead, you have a class system where, where the, the really well-off get really good schools and other people don't. And I think back to my first grade, I was in Fortune Four School, uh, elementary school in Roseburg, and that school's still, still operating. And Mrs. Matthews had a class of about twenty students. And she'd split us into little groups and she'd work all around the day, and she'd work with this group, this group. Uh, and her goal was to have everybody at the third grade level by the end of first grade. And she did. Now, I didn't know that there anything too special about that, but then my family moved to Portland and I was in a different school. And suddenly, I am the star of the classroom. Because I'm a third grade level in a second grade classroom. And because of Mrs. Matthews and modest class size and just, you know, a really good rural Oregon school. And that's, that's what I want to fight for and I don't want to see the dollars, the, sent off to, uh...
But what is our leverage? What, what kind of leverage do we have? Just write letters or protest?
Yeah, no, definitely weigh in. It's really useful if you're part of any sort of national association, if it's a national association with veterans, or it could be nurses, or it can be teachers, or it can be, uh, you're at, are you at the post office?
No.
No, no. Okay.
I do go there to my standards.
Well, so any network you have, ask that network to weigh in and fight for good schools for all Americans. We have to make choices. I mean, this, the question that the president's budget raises with the fifty billion more for defense, and he's planning to send a bunch more folks to Afghanistan. Uh, and every soldier in Afghanistan costs a million dollars a year for us to support that, that soldier. And, um, this raises another foreign relations issue and different, folks will have different opinions on that, but I've made several trips to Afghanistan. And what I found was a government that was massively corrupt and getting more corrupt because of the payments from America. What I found was a country riven by tribal differences. You have various strong tribes that are fighting each other and then within the, the Pushtun tribe, there's two main groups, they're fighting each other, and they have fought each other for hundreds of years. There, there was a poem by Rudyard Kipling. He did a lot of war-type poems and he, you know, the British weren't, weren't Afghanistan. And he had a stanza in this poem about Afghanistan and I won't, I won't get the stanza quite right, but it was more or less, "If you're injured and you fall on the Afghanistan plane, then roll over on your rifle and blow out your brains before the women of Afghanistan carve you to pieces." That was roughly the stanza. I mean, they've never wanted foreigners in their country. They drove out the British, they drove out the, the Russians, and they don't want us there either, except the ones who are profiting by it. Anyway, I'm giving you a bit of a story here just to say, we have to choose, are we going to try to establish a Western-style nation in a country that wants none of it and spend our money doing that? We were spending a hundred and twenty billion dollars a year there. Are we going to have classrooms where a teacher can actually have a small enough classroom to assist and we can have the extra programs in the classroom to give our kids a full chance to thrive? Those are tough decisions and it's always hard for anyone to be against more, more military, but I worked a couple of years in the Defense Department for Secretary Weinberger. I saw waste all over the, over the place. So I would much rather us trim that stuff. A lot of it's because Congress passes budgets that fund stuff that the military doesn't even want because it's stuff being built in their home state.
Yes.
Okay? And the, the folks who have the most military in their state are the ones who are on the committees doing, dealing with defense. But we, we are getting way behind much of the world on education and infrastructure and that's a long-term mistake. So I've, I've got, I've branched into all kinds of other things, but that's, that's a little bit of, of how we've got to wrestle with it.
Okay, thank you. I hope you have a chance to drive by the post office.
I did already. I have to weigh in. Yeah, yeah, looks good.
Don't step on the grass. Don't step on the grass.
No, I saw that. I saw the sign.
Let's try to get it back.
Yeah. Grass is good.
Okay, um, well, I just want to start out with saying, um, thank you so much for everything that you're doing, every time I see you on Twitter mostly, but you're just doing the right thing for the right reasons. And you're constantly, um, standing up for our democratic values and I really, really appreciate that. I guess, um, I have to show you my sign. I made you a sign. Thank you, Senator. You're fighting for a hundred percent renewable energy by 2050. I hope that goes through. I hope we can do that. Portland's already done that. I'm very concerned about climate change.
And this county is about the closest to being a hundred percent.
Absolutely. It'd be the, the greenest red county in America. That's right. And, um, and you're also fighting for healthcare and social security for all and education, not incarceration. I worked in the prison, so I know how important education is and I'm going to ask you a question about education. And I appreciate you, um, being on board with that anti-corruption lawsuit because we need a democracy in order to be the best country in the world. We can't be, you know, half a democracy. We have to be the full democracy with all three branches of government working well. So thank you again for all that. My question is, uh, I guess a personal one because I'm an adjunct faculty. I work, um, for Climate Community College, I also work online. I don't get healthcare, any, any of those, um, I work probably more than full-time, but I, I still have to pay my own healthcare. And I also have student loans. I know people say I should have paid off my student loans, but I've been doing this since I got my degree and I've never been able to, um, make more than the standard payment. So, um, it looks like I'll be paying my loans until I'm like eighty-seven or ninety or something, I don't know. It's, it's a pretty dismal situation and having healthcare costs on top of that. And I have a friend who just got defrauded by a, a bad online school and she's, um, wondering what she's going to do and I just heard, so I'm hearing all these things about student loan, like the public loan forgiveness program is in question, the, the safety net for people who get defrauded is in, in question. My own personal situation doesn't really have a, a particular solution unless the public service loan forgiveness, um, somehow changes enough to where I qualify. So I guess my question is, um, what is going on with these particular, you know, like with the defrauding, the defrauded students? I really worry about them. This is graduation season, so people are graduating, but they, they're graduating with debt. And, um, what are we going to do to keep our students afloat so that they end up being productive members of society and not, you know, fall in, fall off the cliff?
Have you heard of the Income Adjusted Student Loan Program? Let me encourage you to look into it. Because what it does, it allows you to convert your student loans into income adjusted and then after a time period of twenty years, the balance is forgiven. And so if you haven't earned enough, so you pay basically ten percent of your income that's above a base amount. And, uh, so if you earn a lot, you pay it off fast. If you earn slowly, you pay it off slowly, but there's an end point and you won't be ninety, you pay off your student loan.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, the loan problem is affecting the economy in all kinds of ways. It's affecting, uh, our young folks getting married because they're postponing marriage because they're excited, we're trying to have these loans and we want to be in a position we can actually be financially stable and we're not stable yet. It's affecting homeownership. People are putting up, buying homes because either, either they don't feel they have the, the bandwidth, financial bandwidth to do it, or the mortgage company doesn't think they have the financial bandwidth to do it and so they can't get the loan. And that has a big impact on middle-class wealth because homeownership is the biggest driver of middle-class wealth. So, the, and this is pretty unique to America that we make it so hard, even in our public schools, so, so expensive. And I've proposed several things. One is that our students should be able to borrow at the same rate that big banks borrow when they borrow from the federal government. That would cut those interest rates way down.
That'd be huge, seven point five percent.
Seven point five percent. So if you're paying two percent, you pay off, you'd have one-fourth the interest that you're paying now, you'd pay it off a lot, a lot faster. And a, a second item is the Pell Grants need to keep pace with the inflation in, in tuition so that there isn't so much lending. Uh, I see that other countries, developed countries are moving to a free or near-free higher education because they're starting to view it the way you view high school. That is, you come out of high school and you, you may need additional training if you go on a career technical education track, plumbing, wiring, sheet metal, so forth. We should help with that. But a lot of jobs require further education in a university or community college slash four-year program, two-year, four-year program. And, and to make that much more affordable means people more likely get it done, get it done faster, contribute revenue back to the economy faster, pay it off faster. So, um, I think that's a, you know, it's a big deal.
That is.
Uh, so those are some of the things I'm working on related, related to that.
Thank you.
And I should explain what this, what you meant by the anti-corruption lawsuit. Uh, we have a, a clause in our constitution, it's been there from the very beginning, it's called the Emoluments Clause. It basically was the concern of our founders that foreign governments would bribe our leaders or create a conflict of interest by doing things that made money for them. And so right up there in front, you have this Emoluments Clause that says, a person holding office can't accept items of value from foreign governments. And it's not just a gift, it's anything that, of value. And so most presidents have set aside their personal finances either through a totally blind trust or for divestiture. And then the question, then, then the question becomes primarily, for example, um, which president was it who was given a couple of cows? And you have to go to Congress to ask permission to keep them. That's the way emoluments work. So some people were given, some presidents were given medals made out of gold, they had to go to Congress and ask to make them. The whole idea is that the president is beyond conflict of interest. And the problem we have right now is that President Trump has not fully, done a fully blind trust, is getting briefed on his finances and we have, for example, our diplomats are telling folks that they will help them book their conferences at Trump hotels and conference centers. That's a complete violation of, of this idea that the president cannot provide conflict of interest. And then you have China that had these, uh, copyrights, what's, that's, what's, what for?
Trademarks?
Uh, trademarks, trademarks, that they were seeking for their, their business and it's only when essentially, after the election, I believe the Secretary of State might have been en route to China, that suddenly all these trademarks came through. They're of great value to be able to control the, the name in various settings. And so, uh, a group of us from the very beginning said, "Save yourself a lot of trouble. Either divest or put in a truly blind trust." Uh, and, um, the, the president chose to do neither and it's exposed him to this daily problem of violating the Emoluments Clause. So that, that was the lawsuit that I, I joined to say. And the lawsuit says, "Mr. President, disclose to Congress as required the, what you're receiving of value from foreign governments." And ask them, and then you must ask permission as to keep it because that's what the Constitution says. So that's what we're doing.
And that, that's in a lawsuit, joined with like two hundred or so people from Congress?
Yes.
Yeah, that's incredible.
Two hundred members of Congress.
That's awesome.
Republicans and Democrats?
Um, no. It should be, I mean, it shouldn't be a partisan.
Who has three fifty? Number three fifty? Three fifty-six?
I'm one of those millions of people who feel like their vote didn't count, didn't matter. And so I'm wondering what the Senate is doing about electoral college.
And would you like to see us get rid of the Electoral College?
Yes. Well, I think, I'm, I think I would, but maybe I don't fully understand.
So, nobody fully understands electoral college. You're a good, you're a good. Uh, the, basically each state has votes that correspond to the number of people they have in Congress. So they, so if you have two senators and five members of the House, you have seven votes in our electoral college, which means small states have a lot more weight. For example, Wyoming, which has a population of less than one congressional district, gets three votes. So their votes are tripled a little bit, while New York has less weight because by the time they have so many members of Congress, the two members of Senate don't add very much to the weight per person. But it was done this way, I guess, as partly an extension of the compromise between small and large states. And partly because you didn't have communications and you couldn't easily count votes directly across the country, no telegraph and so forth. So you had to count them locally and then send a delegation with a, with a sealed envelope accompanied by some officers from your state to deliver that to Congress and say, "Here it is." And that's still done that way. And so I, I sat in on the, the first opening of the ballots when I was first elected to the Senate. So in two thousand nine, I'm, go over to the House chamber and you have these envelopes being brought up and different states send them in different sizes and different types of, of wax sealing them and there are very, you know, a lot of tradition, and they open it up and then they announce, oh, this state cast this many votes in this fashion. And the, a state can really direct how they do this. The state can split it, split their electoral votes based on the, the weight of the votes in the, in the state, or they can sign all the votes to the winner, which has been more common to, to do it that way. Uh, the state can also assign the votes, uh, to the person who wins the national race instead of winning the state race. So this has led to a movement called National Popular Vote. Under National Popular Vote, the, the, the idea is that enough states would assign their electoral votes to the winner of the popular vote, that the winner of the popular vote would win the Electoral College. That's the idea. Now, why would you go that, do it in that fashion? The answer is because to do it, to do it by changing the Constitution requires all those small states that have extra powerful voting in the presidential to agree to let go of that. They're not going to let go of it. So this is kind of a, a detour way to get to a National Popular Vote. Uh, I support it. The Oregon, uh, uh, House and Senate have voted on it a number of times. The Oregon House has supported it, the Oregon Senate has not. Uh, so that's, that's kind of where that stands in terms of our state. Is that helpful? So I, I don't know if there's, I'm trying to think if there's any other way to... So I don't know if there's, I'm trying to think if there's any other way to approach this question, but that's, that's pretty much the national conversation. And it is kind of a strange way to look at it because does that strengthen your vote counting or does that weaken your vote counting? In other words, if you're in a state and you campaigned hard for somebody and that person loses, but the votes, electoral votes are assigned to that person anyway, it could be a little upsetting. On the other hand, everybody in the country would count equally. So you would have Democrats going to Republican areas of the country to campaign. And you'd have Republicans coming to Democratic parts of the country. You'd have folks going to rural areas and urban areas because every, every vote would count equally. You couldn't say, well, that state is a blue state, they're going to vote, so we'll ignore that. Or that state is a red state. Because the difference, if you can move 5% of the electorate in that state, that may be how you win the presidency. So it would be a much more level playing field across the nation if we could do it. And that's, I think it would be helpful for us to do it that way.
Last three. Who do you wish, I had 351?
I'm going to pass on.
352? And 360?
First of all, I was wanting to understand a little bit of how, how the Republicans come up with their health care plan in the Senate. Okay. What's the timeline? Is that like a little slower?
So away from next Thursday, the plan that the Majority Leader has laid out is he's going to call for us to have the vote on the Republican plan, the Trump care plan from the House. And it'll be done through reconciliation. And so essentially, therefore, we will be debating the House plan. And various folks can propose different amendments to the House plan, and we can vote on them. But then, our understanding is the plan is to bring out the secret plan, which will be an amendment that will obliterate everything done before and just put this secret plan in place and one we haven't seen and haven't debated. And that can be the under reconciliation. It calls for 20 hours of debate, it's simple majority, but one side can give back their time. So you're only guaranteed 10 hours of debate. No way anybody can really, really see, yeah, you can't even read the bill, let alone get insight, experts, and there's no, here. So starting next Monday, we're going to see a series of different styles of protesting within the Senate to attempt to draw attention and say, this is not acceptable. Something that affects millions of lives has to be done in open. It has to have a chance for citizens across the country to weigh in. And it has to have a chance in committee to be amended for, I guess, the floor. Because otherwise, it could be by Friday, it could be passed, and by Saturday, it could be in the Oval Office.
And then the idea that Republicans talk about choice, you know, that they really care that we all get to choose which insurance we're going to pay for, et cetera, et cetera. What about the choice of single payer?
Well, let's take a little feedback. So how many, how many folks, sometimes called single payer, sometimes called Medicare for All. But how many folks here like that idea? How many folks really don't like that idea? Okay, so I'll tell you, so here's, here's the thing that I feel about healthcare in America. It's super complicated. And that complicated, that complexity causes lifelong stress. Am I signed up or are my children covered? Why is deductible on this policy and that policy? And do I have it through my work or is that insurance policy really good? Do I need to buy one separately from that? It's just like you're always, we're always thinking about it. Whereas in most developed countries, it's like you're a citizen, you have a basic level of healthcare cover. And if you want more, you buy an add-on policy. Very simple. I mean, it's like you're born, you don't have to fill out a form, you got it. I like that. And that's why I'm supportive of Medicare for All. I think it would reduce the anxiety enormously. It may not cover everything, it may not cover every drug in a formulary, it may not cover heart, lung operation, it may not cover super expensive certain new drugs on the market. And what people could have insurance for that additional amount. But you wouldn't have to be worried about, you know, you signed up or not. Or, or, you know, like, for example, we have Medicaid. But your income key's changing. So you have to, you're in Medicaid, now you're out of Medicaid. Now you have to get private insurance. But while you have private insurance, your income drops, and now you're eligible for Medicaid, you've got to change it. And then you're turning 65, well, how does Medicare work? And what about Medicare Advantage? And by the way, if I get hurt at work and I'm covered by different insurance, workers' comp, is that, how good is that policy? Is that going to protect me? And if I'm not getting insurance through my work, then can I get it on the exchange? How much premium support do I get? Which one is the best, the best insurance company? It's like you have to think about it and worry about it all the time. So I like that idea. And the other thing is the overhead of a single payer is much lower. It's like 3% versus over 20% for private insurance companies. So you still have private providers, you still have the Kaisers and the Providencees and so forth. You still have all your private providers. But instead of the, and this is something that people don't think about too much. The doctors are sick of having to figure out who to charge. Because if they have patients from 20 different insurance plans, they have to submit the right format to each of those insurance plans. And different levels are covered in each one of those, those companies. But if you have, and so what they have told me is that if we could just send our bill in one place, all our bills get sent to one place, we'd spend so much less time on paperwork and more time with patients. And I think that's an additional advantage of that approach. So I'd like to see us go that way. There was, so in 2009, there was a proposal to change Medicare age from 65 to 55. And there were 60 votes for it for about four days, and then we lost the 60th vote and weren't able to do it. But because largely, and in the course of human life, problems multiplied from the mid-50s forward. So that would have been a pretty significant change. I'll just, I'll just ask, how many people would have liked to see Medicare age lower than 55? And how many folks would oppose that?
You know, one reason is sometimes when you're in your 50s, like mid-50s, if you're a corporation worker, sometimes they'll lay you off. And then you're in a no-man's land. You have no insurance unless you pay like a thousand a month to get private coverage. And so that's one aspect I think is real, real hard for people who, not on their own choice, we started really, but maybe they get laid off, they have to find part-time jobs, they have no purpose.
Well, and one thing I should clarify, some people say, that sounds like socialized medicine. Socialized medicine means the government owns the medical providers. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a one systematic way of paying the private medical providers to make it just simpler for all and having people automatically enroll. So, but that's a good point. We have this thing called Cobra. So you lose your job, you're able to carry that insurance policy for a few months, but you have to pay for what the company would be paying, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then you're going, hell, before this runs out, I've got to figure out what to do. And so again, that stress and complexity of our, it's really, so the way this unfolded was after World War II. We said, we want to get healthcare to a lot of people fast. And so let's base it on employment and ask the employers to do this. And so we went with that employment approach. Most of the other industrial nations said, hey, just like we have public roads, we need a public healthcare system. Let's expand our clinics and everybody will be able to go. And so those were two different strategies. And ours has led to a very complicated world where every time you change, I mean, it used to be you didn't change jobs as much. Now we're in a society where you change jobs all the time, that's a different healthcare plan, different healthcare plan. Am I covered or what is, what do I do now? So was that, wait, one more?
Yeah, it's actually been a similar thing also about Trump care. But I guess I was wondering more specifically, next week, Democrats, or Senate Democrats are going to be opposing the bill. But I was wondering if that opposition is going to include withholding consent for legislative processes? And we wrote it down, the filibuster by amendment.
Imagine the spectrum of possible ways we could draw attention, and the answer would be yes. I may not be more specific than that, but if you want to observe the first piece of that, then tune in to C-SPAN at about 3:00 PM Pacific Time on Monday.
So there's like 1,000 amendments ready to go.
See, we're not actually on the bill yet. So that, that part can't happen yet. But we're planning to draw attention to the, to the unacceptable hiding of this process.
So you guys are like willing to filibuster until there's the CBS score in public hearings?
So filibuster isn't quite the right word because we aren't on the bill yet. By the, so, maybe I'll just do a little diversion on filibuster. Do you know what the word filibuster means?
It's like Mr. Smith goes to work in them.
Well, yes, exactly. But the root of the word was actually what it was. The root of the word means basically, it means piracy. It comes from a Dutch word for piracy, freebooter, which is a pirate. And so it's piracy in the Senate. Are we going to beg to piracy? Yes. But if you're on a bill, even a bill which isn't privileged like reconciliation is, the majority can put out a motion to close debate. And then that, that motion will be voted on two days after one intervening day. And then there's additional 30 hours of debate. So you can't, just by speaking, carry on, block a bill forever. The only way you can block a bill is you have to have at least 41 votes on a normal bill to block closing debate. But if you have a group smaller than 41, you can't, you can't block it indefinitely. In this case though, the bill's privileged, it's reconciliation, it's simple majority, and we don't have those tools in the same way.
But it is true that you can just keep, you can kind of like grind to a halt the legislative process by not like giving your consent.
So like withholding consent. I know, in the Oregon legislature, things are done by rules that have been modified to work over time because it's, because it's sane operation. But in the Senate, rules haven't been modified, so to make things work, a lot's done by unanimous consent. And that can be objected to, and I think it will be objected to on every available occasion in the next few weeks. As one piece of this.
Thanks.
Is there any chance that any of the Republican senators might not vote with the majority?
Yes, absolutely. But it's going to depend on what they hear in the next two weeks. And so that's, that's why we're hoping grassroots Americans will pick up and say, absolutely no voting on this bill without a full, at least a month for experts to weigh in and see. So in, in 2009, we had 100 committee hearings, roundtables, and walkthroughs, just in the Senate and then the equivalent on the House side. We had the longest ever markup, which is a session on the, with a committee to be able to consider amendments and vote on them. Longest ever in history in the Health Committee, second longest in history in the Finance Committee. Over 100 minority amendments were adopted. And then we had 25 days on the floor of the Senate. In this case, we're talking zero committees, walkthroughs or roundtables, zero minority amendments, and one day on the floor of the US Senate. Except for the delay, we might be able to stretch that out on the back end with amendment voting. But there's a point at which the majority can shut that down by, by ruling it's still a choice. So it's not, it's not magical. But we're hoping the public will protest and say, give this a month of public exposure. It's that important to the healthcare of the nation so we can have a real debate and a real amendment process. And so anyone feels comfortable, weigh in in any fashion. Asking your family members in other states to weigh in and say, a month of public discussion before we vote on changing the healthcare for millions of Americans. It would be a great thing.
If they do weigh a month, will that move out of reconciliation and record a supermajority vote?
No, no, not necessarily. I don't think that would be the compromise. I think they would insist on keeping it in reconciliation. But to offer a chance for the bill that's being, the amendment that they're planning to put into the reconciliation process to be fully analyzed, read. And you know, this is really, this is kind of strange, right? Because despite all those committee meetings, markups, and hearings in 2009, my colleagues across the aisle said it wasn't enough. And, but now they're saying, no, no committee hearings, no, no public disclosure, no. And so it's, it's an enormous contrast. And just, we, when I was in the state legislature, there was a 24-hour rule of giving notice on the bill before it could be considered in committee. And so I think it was my second cycle in the legislature, I voted against the rules and I introduced an amendment that said at least three days. I said, look, people over the state, you've got to give them three days of notice so they can make an arrangement, they want to come testify. And then when I became, but I lost. When I became Speaker, we made it easier. So we had a markup in committee, people all over the state could know about it, they could come if they wanted to and could testify. So much simpler bills, I might add, massive national healthcare.
Sounds like we process them.
But why can't we have a perfect world where there's a non-artisan group creating this and then there's no vote involved? It's, it's the Democrats and Republicans saying, whatever you guys decide and it's perfect for, because this is life and death for, for our citizens. Why can't it be that way? Why does it have to be partisan?
Well, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be partisan, but you do have a, you have a different, you have two philosophies at work here that are different. And one philosophy is that healthcare is a, is a luxury. And if you don't have a job that provides healthcare, go get a better job or learn more so that you can buy healthcare yourself. It's like personal responsibility, vision. And there's another philosophy, which is healthcare is more like a fundamental part of the infrastructure of a modern society. And just like we build roads that we all use, let's build a healthcare system that we can all use with minimum anxiety. And so those are the two, those philosophies are from two different places.
But see, that, that perfect committee would not fulfill, they would work on price and they would work on the best for the people. I'm just, I'm just a Pollyanna, but.
I'm talking about perfect healthcare.
No, I want, I want you to know that your Mrs. Matthews, right? You, you know that a first-grade teacher should have double halos in heaven. But you, you were privileged to have an awesome teacher. Not all teachers are awesome.
Is that true?
So you are where you are today because of your genes and Mrs. Matthews. And not your blue jeans.
Well, I think we're wrapping up. And thank you again for emceeing for us. I kept waiting for the really tough question I could get you answered. But really appreciate your service and presence and working with you all. These town halls are a great chance for me to continue to engage in this type of dialogue with folks with a variety of viewpoints. And I feel like if we did more of that, we'd come closer to the, what we're talking about, an integration of perspectives. And there's an irony here though, because the irony is that the healthcare bill passed in 2009, the heart of it was the plan that came from the Republicans. It was the marketplace exchange where private companies would compete. And so that almost what might have been what your perfect committee would have produced, a combination of a little bit more Medicaid for very poor families, stronger essential benefits package, and the marketplace where private companies compete. But the partisanship got in the way of even that. And one of the most disheartening things that I saw early that told me that the Senate had changed the policy or the country's changed the policy was in April 2009. And there was an article about Frank Luntz's memo of healthcare strategy. And Frank Luntz was the key strategist for my, for the, for the Republicans in the Senate. So I got a copy of it and I read it and I said, oh my goodness, this is terrible. Because what the memo said is no matter what the majority comes up with for a healthcare plan, we're going to call it a government takeover. And I said, wait, the private exchange with companies competing, that's the Republican plan. How can you call the government, the Republican plan a government takeover? But the partisanship was so intense that the goal wasn't, let's make healthcare work better. The goal was, let's undermine this new. better, the goal was, let's undermine this new president, Barack Obama, and stop any momentum that he might have. And I'm just like, no, that's not why we're elected, we're elected to solve problems. And this is what I really like about the Oregon Legislature. The Oregon Legislature, still to this day, they, it's changed, okay, but still, when they come together, they don't raise any campaign funds for six months, they are there in Salem, most people stay there, they get to know each other well across the party lines, and they have a process where they wrestle with it in committee with proper notice, they, they try to persuade each other, they vote, it either passes or doesn't, you either like or dislike it, you can be very frustrated if the bill you want doesn't, but it actually works as a legislative process. We no longer have a functioning, working legislative process in the Senate. And I'm putting forward ideas, as I have in the past, of how to make it work better. I'll mention one to you. I'm going to be proposing that once a nominee from the president for an executive branch position gets all their paperwork done and their ethics clearance, that 100-day clock starts. And if the Senate hasn't acted on that, within that 100 days, at the end of the 100 days, one or two things happens. Either there's no petition from senators to hold a debate, in which case they're automatically approved, or there is a petition from senators saying they want a vote, a debate, a vote, in which case the next day it ripens, is the term that's used, it becomes the top priority, and the next day you have an hour debate, and you have an up-down vote. So our nominees for the executive branch are not trapped and stranded forever. They get, they either get a vote, they either get voted in or they get voted out, but they're not trapped forever. Right now, it's, there's all kinds of folks who are being recruited who don't, don't want to, don't want to put their name forward because they, they're not sure if it'll take a year to get a vote. And that was true, you know, so if it's a Republican president, that Republican president should get a vote on his or her nominees. If it's a Democratic president, they should get a vote on his or her nominees. We can't let advice and consent be a tool, a partisan warfare could just completely strand the executive branch from being able to function. So that's, that's an example of trying to make that, this, the gears work again a little better. Well, thank you all so much for coming on this beautiful weekend.
I want to give a shout out to Oregon for being the very first state in the history of the United States to provide more than a two-gender identity on identity documents such as driver's licenses.